Alright ladies and gentlemen, I want to bring our um fiscal year twenty 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 one budget work session and special meeting to order. First on down our agenda which um we're going to be addressing the amendment to the emergency declaration which is we're going to send the Warren County curfew that was established. And um before we do that, we want to ensure that the public knows and understands that um thank you. That the governors stay um stay at home or still in act phase one is still in order. Which is um what we were calling wait, wear and wash. Is that right? Did you get it right?
He did.
And um wait and not being a one of the one of the six feet and wear a mask and and wash your hands when you're out in public. Just remember that the uh first stage, stage one of the governor's declaration is still in order. We just rescinded Warren County's curfew which was from nine PM to six AM. Uh before I ask for a motion to rescind our ask the commissioners if they have any comments or questions or concerns in reference to saying. Alright here now, I will entertain a motion that we rescind our curfew for Warren County as stated.
Mr. Chairman, that we rescind the Warren County curfew as stated.
Second, I couldn't.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Pierce that we rescind our uh Warren County curfew. Is there any further discussion? Here now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Uh I will go back and do a little housekeeping. I do apologize but um for our social media citizens that are watching, this uh Commissioner Bernadine Baker is on their phone. And I believe Mr. Powell is on there now. Is he not? Mr. Powell, are you there? Well maybe he'll be joining us. Um Commissioner Pierce, you take care of that part. Thank you so much. Alright, uh the second order of business is for us to accept the coronavirus relief funds. And Mr. Jones, you want to say a little bit about that before?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I also have um our finance director, Ms. Bradford, coming forward. But as you know, the federal government has uh passed a few coronavirus uh relief acts. And those acts are actually providing some funding to the state. And the state in turn has provided some of that funding to local governments. And we have two instances tonight uh where we have been able to receive some of those funds. So just to make sure we are in compliance with our grant policy, we are asking for your approval to accept over five hundred thousand dollars in funds from the state. And then EMS specifically has received some funds for the expenses that they are incurring. And uh Ms. Bradford will provide you the detail when she brings those items forward.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Bradford? You can do it right there if you want.
Okay. If you bring the details on the faculty building.
Okay.
The microphone might, the microphone. Yeah.
Alright, you ready, Ms. Bradford?
I'll try to be trying. I'll break them.
Alright.
Okay, um I have the the background on the budget amendment to uh to budget the forty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars um that was awarded or given to the emergency medical services to use to sub to pay for uh COVID nineteen expenditures. And this came uh it was a supplemental Medicare payment and from the US Health and Human Services stimulus fund. And again, they are, there are restrictions on it. Has to be used to uh for expenditures related to uh the coronavirus or COVID nineteen.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So Ms. Bradford, if you could talk about, I mean, that is a budget amendment. And that's fine. And then I can provide an overview of the um five hundred thousand dollars because they have a memo relates to that. And I forgot I was the one who put that memo.
Okay, alright. Was there, were there any questions about the budget?
Yes, it's a, I'm sorry.
Is there a date that that money has to be used by? Like is it moved December thirty first or is it just? Uh Mr. Chief Pascal and I are going to get together in the morning because we've got to go in and officially accept the funds and fill out some paperwork. And uh and I will, I I'll be able to tell you that next time.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. You got something to say?
So, so, so Ms. Bradford is uh doing a budget amendment. For us, we want to stay in compliance with our grant policy. And again, these are coronavirus relief funds that we are scheduled to receive from the state in five and an amount of five hundred to seventy-one thousand dollars and thirty um thirty dollars. And uh there is, we have to go in, let's, just like Ms. Bradford said, there is a little bit of an application that we have to do just to say that we would like to receive the money. The state will send it to us electronically um within a few days of us submitting that application. But we have to come back to you with a plan that we have to submit to the state by June first. And these funds do have to be used by December thirty of this year.
Alright, is there any other discussion or question in reference to the acceptance of the coronavirus relief fund? Yep, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we will.
Chairman, I move that we accept the coronavirus relief fund, Mr. Bernadine Baker.
Second.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, a second by Commissioner Hunt that we accept the coronavirus uh relief funds as stated. Is there any further discussion?
I've got a quick question, Assistant. Are these funds to be used for like um like EMS is using for transport if persons something kind of insurance or something like that? Or exactly, or is it for the PPE? Or how do those are similar? What could be related?
Sure. And so tho- those examples that you gave are all good examples. And so um there are categories of funds, but they all have to be related to expenses that we have incurred or expect to incur um related to the pandemic. So yes, PPE absolutely can be used. We can even go so far as to um pay for technology. For example, we have a need to have laptops for our directors to make sure if we're ever in a position again, that we can work remotely without any problems. So all of those sorts of things are acceptable expenses. We just have to outline what we would like to um pay for in our plan. And um you know, if the state says that there are expenses that we have incurred that don't fall in line with uh uh what you would expect to be an expense
For example, the crowd.
The, the um pandemic, then we would have to pay for that. But the categories are broad enough that, that there aren't any problems with us paying for. Uh for example, we had to get a detailed um cleaning of two of our buildings, for example. It was very expensive. And we can use those funds to, to pay for that cleaning because it was related to this.
Are you okay, Ms. Pierce?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. I understand that Mr. Powell is on the, on the line there. Mr. Powell, just to catch you up, that we're entertaining a motion, which the motion is on the floor by Ms. Baker and second by Commissioner Hunt that we accept the coronavirus relief funds. We, we just finished up discussion in reference to saying. Do you have any uh discussion questions or statements?
No, I don't.
Alright. All in favor say aye? Opposed nay? Alright, motion is carried. We'll just take a moment to do a little, some more housekeeping. Um how are we doing on the social media? Are we talking not enough or?
I think if you can just make sure you are speaking directly into the microphone like this, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, you're good.
You've heard your request and Mr. Jones?
Is, the second part of that would be that budget amendment that Ms. uh Bradford mentioned too. Hers is actually a budget amendment.
For EMS?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Baker?
Excuse me, I just have to ask you all the three hours because I can hear you very well, but I just am not coming in clear.
Okay. We have, utilize your mics please.
Okay. Can you hear him, Ms. Baker?
I can hear you very well.
Okay.
Alright, thanks. Mr. Jones, Jones?
Speaking to the microphone?
Yes.
He cut it off first.
Okay. Alright, we, we, we worked this thing out. We involved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Baker. Alright, so the, the second part of that is the acceptance of the relief fund for EMS. Is that right, Mr. Jones?
Right, it's actually a budget amendment that you would make.
Okay, a budget amendment. Okay, this is the memorandum that you passed out to us in separate. Okay. And that is at four um forty-five thousand five one, five five one. Alright. So ladies and gentlemen, uh the request is that we accept the actually it's a budget amendment, number fifteen, which is fiscal year twenty twenty budget ordinance and is being presented for approval. And this is for the emergency medical services budget at uh forty-five thousand five five one. That is the um request and I entertain a motion or discussion in reference to saying.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve budget amendment number fifteen to FY twenty twenty budget ordinance.
Alright, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker that we approve the fiscal, excuse me, the budget amendment number fifteen as stated and requested. Is there any further discussion? Here now, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Aye.
Alright, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Alright, we're going to go into um fiscal year twenty-one budget overview and discussion. But before then, we're going to entertain item three B, which is the Warren County classification and page study presentation. Mr. Jones?
Sure, thank you, Chairman. This evening, we have uh Mr. David Hill. He's from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, which is their um council of governments compared to our CART, CART, CARG. And Mr. Hill is part of the team that uh conducted our Warren County classification and pay study. It's referenced in the proposed budget for you. And we expected to have this presentation for you all last month, but we had to put that on hold. So he's here this evening to present to you the classification and page study report.
Alright, thank you very much. Gil?
Hello, Prince. I have David Hill. Well Carter, who assisted me on your study, he and I both are about seven-year retired local government employees. And since our retirement, we've been working with Piedmont Triad Regional Council governments located up in the Winston-Salem area. But we do work all across the state. We truly have worked from Murphy to Manial. And actually the Naxhead, even further across the bridge. But this evening, I want to talk to you about the pay plan and position classification study that we conducted for Warren County and then my presentation. I'm going to talk about the, from the initial meetings we had with employees beginning in this room, the collection of market data, the analysis of that data, follow-up meetings, initial meetings and follow-up meetings with county manager and HR manager. And working through all of that data to we came up with a reasonable recommendation for the county. So I may need Paula's assistance. I think I can. So all I'll begin with, and most of this data is in the report, I think you have with the part of your package. What I have on the PowerPoint is some additional data that may or may not be in your report. The report actually contains more detailed information. The data that's in the PowerPoint is for purposes of getting that overview. So as I go through, we're going to be, first we're going to talk about what the county would look like at the very beginning of the study. That allows us to collect that at the very beginning of the study. And I'm talking about January, the middle of January of this, of this year's, the beginning of the study. For us to take a uh a glimpse, a photo, a snapshot of what you look like as far as your workforce. That allowed us to create or establish some benchmarks. So most of what I'm going to show you in the next couple of slides, I want you to view those with the standard deviation or bell curve. Just keep that as, as the primary focus as you look at the graphs and charts that come hereafter. Because I, I will talk about and use this when I talk about salary grades, ranges, the position of employees, salaries in relation to their grades. But in a mature workforce, and our definition of a mature workforce is anybody in the local government who has a average length of employment of between eight and ten years. And if you look only at that element, Warren County has a mature workforce. You have an average length of employment of a little over nine years. So as we look at this bar graph, over there, of course, would be people who just began work. Here you'll have people who've been with you in that eight to ten-year period. And then people who've been with you much longer than that. So again, as this is the back, with this as the backdrop, we're going to take a look at some other charts. And again, the very first thing we take a look at is what does that distribution of employees look like in accordance with their employment date? Now, I told you that you have a mature workforce. But a lot of that is because you have a considerable number of employees who've been with you a very long time. But if you take a look at this chart, and I do have an inability to recreate a bell curve. So my bell curves look more like a St. Louis arch. But if you'll look at that arch, and that arch represents a twenty-five-year career. You, you have employees who've been with you um close to forty years. But you can see that the majority of your employees have only come to work for you in the last few years. Actually, you have a quarter of your employees have been fifty-two years or less. Your forty-two percent of your employees have been with you for five years or less. And then you have sixty-five percent of your employees have been with you ten years or less. Now, a lot of my reporting, I talk about in terms of two, five and ten years or less. A lot of times in my reporting, I also talk about less than two, less than five, less than ten. So my numbers here may not match up exactly with the numbers in the report because I use different measuring points. But this is just that graphic to show you that you do have quite a few employees who've been with you a long time, but you have, the majority of the employees have been with you a relatively short period of time. Now what this chart does not show you is the number of employees who came to work for you in each of these years. All this is, is telling us who are those employees still employed who came to work in each of those years? So is twenty thirteen the standard? And I'm just making this up? Did you hire about that many people? Did you? If you did, where did they go? Why are they no longer working? Those are some of the kinds of things that we talk about. A point here, just in this graph, this represents the first quarter of this year. Actually through March twenty-third. Through March twenty-third, you've already employed seventeen employees. If you continue the calendar year at that rate, you will end up employing sixty-eight new employees. And that go, and that bar graph would be something like there. Now, I don't know that you will continue at that rate. But as of March twenty-third, you've employed seventeen new employees. This is a similar chart, but this measures how long employees been in their current position. And what, and this becomes important to us later as we focus a lot on this. The first chart tells us how long employees have been with you. This chart tells us how long they've been in their current position. A deputy could have come to work ten years ago, been promoted to corporal, been promoted to sergeant. So we look at how long they've been in their current position. And again, you can see that you've got a third of your employees submitted their position less than two years. Over half, less than five. Greater than seventy-five percent, less than ten. Do I need to do something differently here with this microphone?
We'll, we'll check, we're checking it out.
Alright, this is a measure of employees' salaries in relation to their pay grade range. Now every one of your employees is in a series of pay grades. Sheriff's deputy is in a certain pay grade, sergeant's in a certain pay grade. Every position has an assigned pay grade. What this chart shows us is where are individual employee salaries in relation to their grade range minimum? So every grade range has a minimum salary. Currently, your range is sixty percent, which means that this point right here is sixty percent greater than the minimum. Back to that bell curve, back to that center portion of that bell curve, right there would be thirty percent above minimum, which would be the midpoint. There is where we would expect to find salaries of employees who've been in their position ten or more years. You can see that there are not a lot of salaries in this location of that bell curve. So what this does, and then the next one, is almost the same. This measures salaries in relation to the minimum. This one measures employees' salaries in relation to the midpoint of their range. And that part is important because it's that midpoint of a range that is actual the market value of a position. The market value of a position is not the entry level salary. There's where you would bring employees to work who, who just meet the minimum qualifications. The midpoint of a range is the average salary of an employee who's been in that position eight to ten years, who knows the position, is performing the, the task of the position uh efficiently. This is where you would expect to find those employees. This is one of the charts that we take a look at where we're trying to determine if you have what's known as salary compression. Do you have employees who've been with you a relatively long period of time? Back to that first chart. But who have salaries that are the same as, or nearly the same as new employees that you bring to work? You can see by this chart, and this is without regard to how long they've been working here. This is just the actual measurement of where your employee salaries are in relation to that point right there. And if I have a salary that is five percent above minimum, I would be about right here. Ten percent above minimum would be about right here. With all of that said, you've got almost half of your employees who have salaries very near only five percent above the minimum. You have over seventy percent of your employees who have salaries that are less than ten percent above minimum. This is what salary compression looks like. This is what salary of new employees, long-term employees, people who've been with you different lengths of period of time, but you in this grouping right here, you have employees who've been with you a very long time. In this grouping right here, you have employees who've been with you a relatively short period of time. These spikes right here are there because those show salary increases based on your current longevity program. So you do have a longevity program that employees would come to work at or near the minimum. And then after a specified period of employment, they would get a salary adjustment. So there's where those spikes come in. But there is very good opportunity for employee salary advancement beyond that point. Now, you know, one of the other things we take a look at, at the beginning of the study, we typically take a look at the last ten percent. The last ten percent of employees who came to work. In your case, that's about thirty employees. Where did those employees, what positions did they go into, what departments did they go into? And you're not unlike any other government. Any other county government in North Carolina, the three largest departments are health, DSS and sheriff. So you're, you're the same as any other county. When we take a look at where did the last ten percent of employees go to work? Health, DSS and sheriff. But for you, you can see that health and DSS are over here. Sheriff is way over here. Now, I addressed this in the report. About, in my report comments, I'm only making some assumptions. Because this is very untypical. In just about every other county government that we work in, this sheriff's bar is right over here next to health and DSS. Because again, those are the three largest departments. They typically are going to have the greatest opportunity to hire new employees. So here, my assumption is the sheriff doesn't have any turnover. The sheriff has no opportunity to employ anybody. That's why they're here. Flip side of the coin is the sheriff has plenty of opportunities, just like every other sheriff's office has, but has the inability to bring employees to work. My assumption is the sheriff has as many opportunities for employment as any other sheriff's office. And just does not have the opportunity to bring people to work. This is the very same ten percent of employees, but what position did they come to work in? Now even though health and DSS are the largest departments by employee, they don't really show up down here. Detention officers, number one. Buildings and grounds maintenance worker, income maintenance, caseworker, paramedic and so forth. So you can see that by department, these typically are going to show up based on department size, the opportunity. These down here, and these are just an accumulation of one position at a time. These are two, and that's three. And one of the other things we take a look at as far as that snapshot, what is your average salary compared to everybody else that we took a look at? This is Warren County right here. This is the average. The average of all of those other local governments is forty thousand five five four. Warren County's average salary is thirty-six, three, five, three. What we measured there is the actual salaries of regular full-time employees. We don't count part-time or temporary or any other status. We only count regular, full-time employees. We only count regular full-time employees. So based on, how do you look, what is the measurement of where you are compared to these other local governments? And you can see that relative position of where you are compared to everyone else. So here is that thirty-six three five three average salary that I talked about. This is a distribution of all of your employees' annual salaries in five thousand dollar increments. Of course, your average salary is thirty-six. So that would be about right over here somewhere. The majority of your employees have salaries in the twenty-five, but less than thirty thousand dollar range. That's the highest bar right here. Those are employees who are earning twenty-five thousand but less than thirty. And then right next to those are employees who are earning thirty thousand but less than thirty-five. So that's your average. But you can see where that accumulation of salaries is located. Sorry, Paula. What I've done here is I took all of those classifications of all of those employees who earn twenty-five thousand but less than thirty thousand. And I won't spend a whole lot of time going over this. This is broken down by department and the classification and the number of employees in that classification. This and the next slide, and you will have a copy of this slide to look at later, but this and the next slide identify those particular classifications and the number of employees in those classifications. Income maintenance caseworker. DSS has eleven of those. And this is just a continuation. Registered aides has a classification of deputy registered aides that are three employees in that. Those three employees have that salary at least twenty-five or less than thirty thousand. So based on all of that initial data analysis comparison, the two primary concerns that we came up with was your salaries were not market competitive and you had a significant degree of salary compression. So what we'll take a look at now is that actual study. I won't spend a whole lot of time going over this. This is just that methodology. We started in this room with employee meetings. We met with the manager. Talked about where we were, where we were going, how were we going to get there. Employees completed a twelve-page position description questionnaire. That was a questionnaire designed that each employee completed telling us every detail about their position. What they did, how they did, and what they did with, every element of what they did. We collected and reviewed all that market data. We made initial findings and recommendations based on that data that we collected and all that information. We then came back and had a meeting with Mr. Jones and Kia. And we went over those initial findings and recommendations. We worked through that. We took into consideration a lot of other information about Warren County. Because here, you had two guys from the outside looking at a bunch of data and coming and sitting down with the manager and saying, based on all the data, based on all the information that we have, here's where, here's the salary grades that we believe all of your positions should be in, based on market comparisons. And here's the individual salaries that we believe each of your employees should have, based on those same comparisons. Now, I can tell you that we had that initial meeting with Mr. Jones. We told him that because of that data, because of our interpretation of that data, and based on our initial recommendations, the cost of implementing those original recommendations would be a little more than two million dollars. So when I said that to Mr. Jones, he looked at me and said, you have some other options.
Absolutely.
And we did. We worked through a series of options, took a look at all the numbers, how differently could we look at all those numbers? What differently could we do with all of those numbers? So to begin with, here's all, here's all of what we've gotten and certainly collected data from. And you can see most of those are your neighbors or are very close by. And what we take a look at, when we develop these kinds of market lists, where can a Warren County employee leave their driveway tomorrow and do nothing except drive in a different direction and be at a different workplace within thirty, forty-five, or perhaps an hour's drive? There's where all these other local governments come from. So the majority of your employees will not move to a different area of the state. You'll have managers or department directors or technical folks who may entertain the thought of moving to a different part of the state. Greater than ninety percent of your employees will not move just to go to work for another county or another local government. So what's important is where can they drive tomorrow in a relatively short period of time? There's where these local governments come from. So what does it look like when we start gathering all that data from? This is our basic worksheet. This is for one, this is for Sheriff's Deputy. And this is all of the information that each of those have for that particular classification. Thank you, Paula. So what we have here, again, back to that bell curve. This is the minimum salary. This is that midpoint or that highest point of that bell curve. Here's the maximum. This is the actual average salary for all deputies or police officers in municipal government. But we measured the range, how far is it from there to there? What is that measurement of that actual salary or average salary to that midpoint? This is Warren County's deputy. Warren County deputies are in a grade nineteen, a minimum of thirty thousand three nine five. Your average deputy earns thirty-three five oh one. This is the average and the median of all of those local governments. You can see that you're over five thousand dollars or eighteen percent below the minimum, which means that when any of these other local governments advertise for a deputy, they're on average are advertising a starting salary of thirty-five six. You're advertising thirty thousand four hundred. Your average salary for this particular classification is thirty-three five. Average salary for everybody else is almost forty thousand. Again, you're about eighteen percent behind the market. So we take a look at that and we say, well, within your current structure, we need to move this particular classification from a grade nineteen to a grade twenty-two. At least get that minimum salary up to thirty-five something so you can be competitive. All right, but that's a three-grade, that's a three-grade movement. You have five percent differential between each grade. That's a fifteen percent movement. If I'm a deputy and my salary is thirty thousand three nine five, I just got out of school, the sheriff hired me, brought me in at the minimum, my position gets moved to a grade twenty-two, I'm going to get a five thousand dollar raise. So when I say when we came back on our initial recommendation, it costs two million dollars, this is where all of that comes from. You have all of those employees who have salaries near that entry level. So if we begin moving these positions up to three, four, five, or more grades, that's a five percent movement every grade. So when we took a look at that, now, I'm only using this as an example. Every one of your classifications has a worksheet like this. And when we worked on those worksheets, you actually had fifty-two employees who were in classifications that were right where they needed to be. In accordance with the market, they were in classifications that you were competitive with. You had seventy employees in classifications that needed to go one grade, eighty-five that needed to go up two grades, you can see the numbers. You had three employees that were in classifications that needed to go up six grades. So again, when I mentioned that two million dollar number, if you implemented our initial recommendations, that's what it would have cost. And that's where you need to be to be competitive with all those other places. So we did have some general recommendations. Adopt a salary administration philosophy statement. And in your report, there are two examples of what that would look like. This is a statement that supports a mission and a vision statement. You may have a mission statement or a vision statement that says Warren County wishes to be the greatest county government in the state of North Carolina. We're going to deliver services at the highest level at the most cost-effective rate. That's a great mission statement, a great vision statement. But how do you do that? It's those two-hundred-and-some employees that you have that caused that to happen. This mission, this salary administration philosophy statement is the third leg of that mission-vision statement. This is the, this is the third leg that balances it. This is saying to that mission or vision statement what the county wants to do. This is the statement of how are we going to treat employees to do what they need to do. So all of this is in your packet. I won't spend a lot of time on this general recommendations. The very first thing you need to do is adopt a recommended pay plan where we are going to say to you, here's your classifications, here's our recommended pay grade. Because without the adoption of that, then none of these other recommendations can happen. So how do we get to where we have reasonable recommendations that are cost-effective that begin the movement of where we think Warren County needs to be? Now, you saw the number of classifications that needed to move up a lot of grades. What we're saying here is that we're going to limit that movement to two grades. No position can move more than two grades, even though there were some that needed to go up six, five, four. Our recommendation is going to contain a salary adjustment element that says every full-time regular employee will receive at least twenty-five hundred dollars. It's also going to say that no single employee can receive an adjustment greater than four thousand dollars. Except where that employee would need a salary adjustment greater than four thousand dollars to just get moved up to the minimum of their new grade. You can't pay somebody less than the minimum of their grade. Employee salaries, and this is to address salary compression, employee salaries will be based on where their salary should be in accordance with the length of time they've been in their current position. We're recommending to the manager that those salary adjustments be implemented over the next three years. We're also recommending that in the second year and the third year, that those members be increased two percent for a cost-effective adjustment. When we say we're going to place employee salaries along the range in accordance with the length of time that they've been employed, that's what that chart looks like. If I'm a brand-new employee, I just started in my position, my salary's going to be at the minimum. If I've been in my position ten years, I'm going to be right there. So our focus is that every one of your employees who've been in their position ten or more years will have a salary that will be at the midpoint of their range. Now, from that first chart, you saw that there were a lot of employees who've been with you greater than ten years. This is just that first initial step. Our focus is to get up to at least here. Just because I've been here forty years right now doesn't mean my salary is going to go here. Our focus right now is just to get you to that midpoint, to that average salary, that market value of a position. So that's that formula that we use to look at. Now, what does that look like? In the first year, that means three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand in salaries. To that, we need to add about twenty-three percent for FICA retirement, 401K. That's going to be another eighty-seven, four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars in the first year. And then you can see four-eighty-four, four-ninety-three for years two and three. Now, to further refine that, that's assuming that the implementation takes place July first. What if we delay implementation until January first? Then those numbers get, especially for the first year, because that's the one that we're going to focus on now. That number gets reduced down to about two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. But it's actually going to be less than that because this is assuming full appointment. This is assuming that all of your positions are filled. And if you're like every other county, you're not going to have every position filled all the time. So this, these numbers actually are assuming full appointment. So the actual numbers are actually going to be a little lower than this. But our recommendation for the first year implementation, about two-hundred, and actually, it would probably be closer to two-fifteen, two-twenty, probably. But that's if you delayed implementation until January first. Those numbers over the next three years will get you to about one-point-five. So this is still recommending that you increase your salaries one and a half million dollars over the next three years. But if you were implementing all of our recommendations right now, that would be two-point-three movement. So this is not getting you to where we think you should be. This is beginning you on those steps to get to where you need to be. And if you don't do the two percent and the two percent, then you're just, you're not even catching up. So that was brief, I think. I apologize for the microphone, my voice. As much as it used to be. Right. The report that you have has more detailed information in it. Paula copied. The PowerPoints and that PowerPoint information is going to be available to you. And after you read the report, if you've had additional discussions, if you want someone to come back and maybe with you have further discussion, be glad to do that. And be glad to answer the questions that you may have now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. I was wanting to address how commissions about home first. Ms. Baker, do you have any questions for Mr. Hill?
No, not at this time.
All right. Commissioner Powell?
No, not at this time either.
All right, Ms. Pierce?
I know we have to go through everything, so if you have any just points and directions, where were we both under as far as salaries and which departments? Did you just pinpoint, say, look, right here, you need to look, put some attention on this one and this one? Because like you said, we can't do it all right now, but we know we need to start somewhere. So we want to start, you know, in all of the markets, I'm sure, but where especially were we hurting at?
And we did have those discussions. We discussed different implementation options or different implementation strategies. One of the things we looked at was what if we just focused on implementing certain departments the first year, another group of departments the second year, another group of departments the third year? From that one chart, you did say that you had fifty employees whose positions were about where they needed to be. Now, that does not- Now, that does not mean that those fifty employees' actual salaries were where they needed to be. Health and DSS, in the chart, you can see that I put in some representative classifications in addition to the sheriff's deputy. I put in public health nurse, I put in social worker, incompetent case holder. If you take a look at the positions of health, DSS, and sheriff, and again, because those are the third largest departments, that's where, that's where the majority of the cost of implementation comes from. Not only were they probably the greatest deviation from market, but the number of employees who were in those classifications just compounded or added to that cost. So to start at a particular point, that's very difficult to say. We could go back and look at the numbers again and say, if we were going to spend two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars the first year, where's the best place to put it? In my opinion, the best place to put it is overall. I think you need to move all of your employees, all of your positions along at the same rate. Instead of focusing on one group of employees or classifications now, a different group in the second year, a different group in the third year. Because of course, when we get to the third year, that first year, that was three, three years behind market. So my recommendation is to, to move everybody along. Particularly because we're moving everybody along at, at small steps. We're not getting to where you probably should be immediately. So to move some and not move others, I think, is going to be an efficient way to implement, in our opinion, what needs to be implemented.
That's all.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Go for it. All right, um, I don't have any questions. He, he was a great presentation, very detailed, and really explains a lot, and I appreciate his idea that you're coming out, so.
Well, again, the report has, has much more detailed information in it, and I probably have about two minutes left in my voice.
Okay.
But again, I'll be glad to come back after you've had an opportunity to look at everything. Be with you individually or as groups and answer any questions that you may have, go over the data and see if there's a different way that we can look at the, at the numbers.
Sure, thank you, Chair. I would just like to thank Mr. Hill for his work. We've enjoyed getting to work with him over the past few months. And he has been able to help us to identify some other sort of operational issues that we can work on. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to engage him further after we wrap this up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hill. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move right on into our budget discussion, which is item three A, uh, three A. And what I'm going to ask is, Mr. Jones, is just give us a, a brief recap overview of this presentation at our last board meeting. And then from there, we'll just ask that any commissioner has a specific department or item that they want to discuss, that they'll bring that up and we'll address it in, in that fashion. Mr. Jones?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I just want to provide a brief overview like you mentioned. We were able to bring the proposed budget to you and, uh, last week. And the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-one is thirty-three million, eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. And that is a one point two percent increase over our current budget with the adjustments that we have made in this current fiscal year. We were challenged with putting together a budget for you because we are in this pandemic that has just been a quite interesting, event to have to deal with. I think it's been unprecedented is the word that many people are using. And we are trying to make sure that we are recommending to you a budget that we can stand behind, that you can stand behind, that we can monitor going forward. And so we paid special attention to making sure that we adjusted some of our revenues down to account for what we think the impact will be. And so you will see those recommendations in that budget proposal. We reduce our property tax projection, our sales tax projections, our motor vehicle tax projections, revenue for our health department as well. And that all combined required us to use approximately five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in our unassigned fund balance. And we are also recommending a two cent increase to our tax rate. Some of the projects that we are trying to focus on are those that the board has identified as priorities for us. And that includes making sure that we were able to pay attention to funding for education. We also tried to fund the broadband project and our next steps in broadband. And we wanted to make sure that we made sure that the county was continuing to, to make progress with regard to the budget. And again, the other item was what you just saw. We also tried to fund a start to implementing some of the recommendations from the compensation study. Realizing that we cannot do that whole implementation in one bite, but we wanted to start down the road of over a few years trying to implement those recommendations. We have public safety that we tried to address as well. Radio towers is part of our radio project that our fire departments will be implementing. And those are the major highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention. We did have some inflationary increases in health insurance, which is what you can expect. But with that said, I will wrap that up, and we are here if you all have any questions about what we've included in the proposed budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board, what I'm going to do now, uh, as soon as it falls, just going to open the folder. Are there a particular department or line item that you want to discuss? Uh, just ask me, recognize that we'll go from there. Suppose. All right, Mr. Jones.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. There was one budget item I just wanted clarification. It was under human resources. It's miscellaneous, and the request was fifteen thousand, and the recommendation is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, hundred and twenty-one.
Well, hopefully that, that salary study, so I would hope.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it. Just, just a little bit of it, Joe. But yes, that's in fact, that's what it is. Uh, Mr. Hill just mentioned that we could not, um, well, I knew we tried to make sure we could afford what we could. And so the recommendation and the proposed budget is that we fund that first year of the compensation study at six months, meaning we start in January. And so that was the amount, and that's where it's placed. Okay?
And, well, I, I have one other.
Yeah.
The appropriation for weed control, uh, I have no problem with that. That is a hundred and sixteen thousand. If my member serves me correct, I saw a report that they have almost a million dollars in their fund balance. And I'm just wondering, uh, are we obligated to keep supporting that project at the current rate?
Well, we can check with them, Commissioner, but they made a point at our last meeting this spring before we got into pandemic mode of requesting, uh, you know, they, sometimes they may go a year without using the funds because they can rely on their fund balance. But because they had to do treatment, they actually requested the funding that we have in the budget this year, and they also requested that we budget for next year. So they anticipate having to use those funds because they have used their fund balance over the last couple of years. But we can certainly have that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Baker?
No, I'm very quick to say, and Mr. Jones feel a little overwhelmed.
Okay. Ms. Fowler? I lost it. Um, this has turned out to be a very good budget work session. There's not much, uh, request or conversation around it.
I don't have a vote, but I have CD, but I actually have a thumb drive, but that's okay too. But, you know, from the last presentation, even though I can't pinpoint and go through which item it is, so there were certain things that, um, Mr. Jones had presented that kind of like raised the eyebrow for me. Uh, one was, um, the extra person in, um, four H. And I understand the request came because, um, they're lowering the juvenile age from, well, they're increasing from sixteen to eighteen. But once upon a time, we were doing youth services. One of the things that we wanted to do were bring in other resources under our umbrella, and that was, um, different service providers. And I think we kind of shied away from that, and I think it's something that we need to look back into instead of trying to do everything in-house. So, you know, if we can just hold off potentially on that position until we actually, um, can go back to JCPC and they do their next round of, um, requests for proposals and things like that, I think that would probably be in our best interest. Because again, I don't, Warren County, our four H to be, uh, and even the Boys and Girls Club, just to be, uh, you know, uh, one time, it's an all kind of deal. There were other service providers that were interested, but the way that we had it set up in the past just wasn't efficient for some of those providers. But I think it's a different climate now. Um, and I think that's definitely something that we should consider or at least hold off. Freeze that request for the time being. That would be my, um, request. Um, and then also I wanted some classification. I spoke to Mr. Jones about it, but, you know, I just want to bring it out to everybody. So there was the initial request for like the ten thousand or so, how much was for recreation? Twenty thousand? Yeah. So, you know, we did the comprehensive study and everything, and everybody wants to do, you know, different programming and whatnot. So I definitely want us to get that underway, you know, with different, um, members of the community, whoever is, you know, available. As well as I understand, um, the Northern Gym, maybe coming under our umbrella, you know, at least under contract bases, you know. But we want to bring all parties, you know, to the table so that we can offer more services to the citizens of the county. So they do know that we're trying to expand some services. So that's just something that I saw I wanted to look into. Now, in regards to, um, the compensation study, it's definitely needed, but we've often heard, you know, the people who've been here for five years to ten years, it's great that we're moving everybody, let's say a two percent, you know. But when you have those people who've been there five years or so, when they're moving at that same two percent as somebody who came in last year, and their salaries are so close, you know, I don't know if we're fixing anything. I think we do need to do something, but I still want us to look at, you know, what additional or what different can we do with that? And I guess it's something we'll have to involve Mr. Hill on, but that's just something that I think we should look at, especially when you have those employees who've been here ten years, and they're like, I'm not even at my vehicle, like, you know what I'm saying, yeah? But that's just something, you know, for our request we can set up.
Yeah, and I'll figure back on what, this, uh, Commissioner Pierce just said, especially when it comes to, uh, the recreation, expanding recreation. I think that's a need, uh, throughout the county, that we proceed in that direction to offer those services to, to the, um, citizens that are, uh, basically, I want to say not able to, but it's such a distance for them to travel to the, uh, the recreation complex and, and different other, uh, aspects of the county that have recreation. I think that's important. So I really appreciate that aspect of addressing that, uh, that point. Um, I do have a question about nonprofits this year. What were you up to that this year as far as funding?
So, so we have spent the forty thousand dollars. It's been awarded, and we can get you that report to show it. We just budgeted the same amount for.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
Right.
Okay. So you just budgeted the same, like, forty thousand, or actually, okay.
And when it comes to nonprofits, is there a way that we can, you know, of course, we have a point scale, but can we do maybe a different point scale whereas a person hasn't applied before, but we still see that need that they may get an extra one or two points or something like that? Versus if we have business or, um, organization ABC and we funded them at ten thousand for the last five years, you know, maybe we can look at somebody else, not necessarily saying that we wouldn't fund organization ABC, but then we also start considering other organizations that will bring value to the county that we haven't funded at that level before.
So that's a good point. Um, and I am taking notes, and so I can wait until you all have gotten all your comments down and then try to go back through them. But we will respond to, to these items. But that's a good suggestion. We have been looking for ways that we can sort of encourage people to use the nonprofit funding, and we do want to spread that, those resources around the, the community so that we aren't in a position where it's the same group, uh, receiving funds year, year over year, so.
Uh, Mr. Jones, I, I do want to go back to, um, you comment about four H debt position there. Can you, can you explain why that request was made and?
Sure. I'd like to take some time to go back and look through our notes and get with Ms. Smith and get you back a written response just to make sure I'm capturing it correctly.
Okay.
And, uh, so we'll provide that to you, uh, this week.
Okay. And what was that projected starting salary debt position? Something like, I don't know, right? I'll see if Ms. Brapper has that detail.
And while they're looking for it, another thing came to mind. So I know, you know, it's getting close to the end of the budget year, and usually departments are looking at their budgets and saying, yeah, we got a couple of dollars, and it's hard doing a little extra spending. It happens. I've seen it. Um, can we just freeze non-essential spending?
Right. So we are on track, and we did that as of April fifteenth. We stopped that just because we are expecting that we're going to receive less revenue this year. So we asked only if it's some sort of emergency, uh, that we spend. Thank you, Kathy.
I think it's the first or second one, I don't think.
Sure. So that salary we have is, we have an increase of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Um, I think the total impact will be about thirty-four thousand dollars. And the reason I'm going to get you an update in writing is because I think this was not completely a new position, but, um, increasing a position that's already part-time. So I'll make sure that I have that correct for you and get you the update.
I like that. That was the situation there.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, Mr. Jones.
Under the miscellaneous, it's another one that I just wanted clarification.
What department?
It's just miscellaneous.
Okay.
Miscellaneous.
Gotcha. Okay, yes.
Appropriation. And, uh, the request, well, one of our items was three hundred and fifty, I mean, three hundred and fifty dollars, and the recommendation was a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That, that, that sounds like, um, oh, okay, Chuck, that is, that's the funding that we have in place for broadband.
Very good.
That one get real early, get something passed, that, Commissioner.
We, we know that.
You know that. All right.
Was there a tip or reason you want to request the three hundred and fifty dollars? No, not this. You have to answer that.
I don't know what that is.
So now, so, yeah, that was just, we moved over, I think, what was in there for last year. And then we decided that that was a good way to put the funds for broadband.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question with that? Can we add that as a particular line item as far as earmarking money specifically towards broadband? Can we do that? Can we do that?
Sure, we just, we have to work with finance to come up with the appropriate line item number, so that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
Yeah, I would too. I would like to see that as a line item. For what department would you put that on, with that standing on? But anyway, all right.
And Mr. Jones, please, I don't think I was questioning you all's integrity, but at my home, when I see miscellaneous, I need to research it, so.
None.
Forget y'all.
Yeah, no offense taken. That's what we're here for.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all have any questions, I'm going to wrap this thing up. I think that, what is our next meeting as far as budget is concerned? The nineteenth? You say it, Ms. Baker?
I think it's the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
It is, at five.
Five p.m.?
Five p.m., the nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Next week?
Yes, next Tuesday.
Okay.
That's if necessary, brother. Or is it necessary?
You know what? I have something else. So if you would, Dr. Young may be watching. If you could just give us a report back on the schools as far as, you know, the capital, the conditions of the schools, maybe if we have any update on potentially maybe South Warren. Just to put us in the know, because I know we didn't have our joint meeting that we had scheduled or were scheduled to have scheduled. If we could just still get an update and if she could just let us know if they're still on the table with the consolidation of any schools or just any update.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Now, I guess that request is, is that in the fashion that potentially?
Yeah, I want to know because of the budget, because they're doing, you know, capital projects and they're doing, you know, they're trying to update Mary and Ward again. Are we really trying to do that when, you know, we've already gone through with the aging of the schools and stuff like that? So it's just one of those things, like are we spending money that we want to, you know, try to up it for security for the schools when we really may not be there too much longer? You know, I'm just curious if that's something that we're going to do or if that's really not in the plan. So I'm just curious to know, so if you could just let me know.
Yeah. I truly agree and I guess that the recommendation by the county manager, I think, falls right into, you know, I think where we should be in regards to school funding. Maybe we probably shouldn't adjust that because like I said, if we're doing things that does not necessarily need to be done based upon what has occurred in the past, then probably need to be adjusted some more.
Okay, so we will, we will have a discussion with schools and see what they say and then we will keep everybody informed about what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, just for this budget, but it could be certainly for upcoming budgets, you know, just so it's kind of on the radar, you know, so that we're aware.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, you have anything else to add? Ms. Baker?
No.
Ms. Powell? I think that is enough. Commissioner Pierce?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones, I really appreciate you and your staff and putting this budget together for us. And like always, we encourage commissioners, if they have a particular question, to reach out to you and one-on-one and see how we can better remember this thing and get it across to the finish line here. If there is nothing else to discuss, I will adjourn our meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. So who doing broadband, I'm sorry.
That would be me.
Okay.
It won't be long.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I thought you were going to let me get away with it.
I was.
So while we don't have the final results of our broadband RFP to bring to you just yet, I am going to give you a little update on our initiative since we did issue our competitive RFP in March or got those results in March. So the county, just to remind you of our timeline, the county formally released a request for proposals in our effort to bring new solutions to broadband availability here in Warren County. That RFP was released on January seventh and vendors submitted responses in early March. So a team of Warren County staff and community voices was assembled to review the submitted proposals in order to make a recommendation to you. And that review team consists of county administration, public safety representatives, and staff from planning and zoning, county IT, economic development, and Warren County schools, as well as two community representatives. And the process, as you know, has been led by the consulting firm Mighty River LLC. So in our RFP, we identified three sectors in need of new or improved service. That was our unserved areas, our higher density population areas servicing residents and businesses in our own government facilities. We received two competitive responses from vendors in that RFP process. Since responses have been submitted, the review team has met, I think, four times, including interviews with those prospective vendors that submitted responses. Joe Ferroso of Mighty River has been very helpful in leading that correspondence and facilitating those follow-up questions with those prospective vendors. So we've also been exploring options outside of those RFP responses as alternative options or supplementary options to the RFP response. So as you see in our proposed budget for fiscal year 21, we have included one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for year one of the broadband initiative. This is on the low end of what we can expect to annually contribute in the first four to five years of implementation, depending on the route that we go. So we also plan to pursue grants, whether it's ourself or through the provider, pursue grants as supplementary funding where appropriate and feasible. So we know that the public is there eager to see these new solutions in the marketplace. And I just want to assure y'all and everyone in the county that our team is steadily working on an answer that is appropriate and within our scope of capability and that addresses the major needs that we know we have. But as we said many times in the process, one of the most important things is to manage expectations. We want to get this right and getting it right takes time. So this will not be an overnight fix and it won't even be a one hundred percent fix for our county. I think that's really important for people to understand. I think it will get us a lot further. But we are getting much closer to implementing some of those strategies that we've been reviewing. So hopefully can bring those to y'all in the near future. Any questions?
Well, not necessarily a question, I have a comment though. In regards to this year's budget, it's good to know that we are moving in a progression format that addresses a holistic approach to our future in regards to what we are doing as far as funding. Broadband, you know, we're specifically earmarking money because during this COVID-19 pandemic here, we are seeing and we know how in the rural community, how there is a greater impact when we don't have access to the internet. And very challenging. So we have to do our diligence in order that if this happens ever again, that it rests on our shoulders to make sure that we start the process in order to ensuring that our citizens do not fall behind the lines as far as having access to, access to information. Going a step further, when it comes to this budget, we're really addressing our employees that during COVID-19 still had to come to work, still had to provide services, still had to do this, had to do that, all right? Not to mention, of course, with our schools, it would be the disparities that they have faced when it comes to this. Also helps aid in that growth. So with all that said, I'm just really excited to know that this year's budget addresses those issues specifically. Not just in a general fashion, but specifically the citizens can see that we are addressing these needed issues within our county. That's where they are. They can go to read and say, hey, it's there. That's what that budget is for. And I, like I said, again, I applaud you all putting this budget together because it really speaks to our needs and the growth of this county. And we want to be competitive throughout the state, yeah, the country. These are the things that we have to do and I appreciate that. So anything else? Oh, now you're ready for this, right? All right. All right, if there's anything else, I will just bring this meeting to a close. Yeah, I think Ms. Baker says she was. Ms. Baker, you're good, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, I take it that we are going to utilize our meeting on the nineteenth based upon the conversation. Is that yes or no?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Baker says yes. I bet so, Ms. Baker. All right. So we've, we've got time, right? We've got time. If your questions get answered beforehand and we don't see the need for the nineteenth meeting, then we will definitely address it at that point. Is that, is that good enough for you, Mr. Jones?
Sure.
Commissioners, is that good enough for you all? All right. All right, you're out there, Ms. Powell. You got anything else, Ms. Powell?
No, no.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, I hereby adjourn. Thank you. Let me say. Thank you.